The meeting is called to order. Good evening, everyone. Good evening.
Good evening.
Our invocation tonight will be given by Mayor Pro Tem John Williams. That will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Will you please stand?
Now you hit the place. Emily Fowler, we thank you for this night that you gave us, Lord, that we can come together. We thank you for a free country, Lord, that we're able to come and talk the city's business and conduct business. We thank you, Lord, for everyone who came here tonight. We pray that we do the business that will be, comes before us, and hopefully we do it in your will. Lord, we ask you to forgive us our sins and go as we go through our ways, go back home tonight. We pray that you leave us safely back there, and we ask these things in thy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first agenda item is the Consent Agenda, consisting of items number one through eight. Counsel, I'm ready for a motion. Counselmember Jennings?
I move to approve.
Now I move to approve.
Counselmember Henshawling?
Yes, for a second.
I have a motion and a second. Mr. Williams, did you have a discussion? Okay. I have a motion and a second. Please register your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Agenda item number nine is a public hearing. Mr. Eisen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This public hearing is on a request for conditional use permit and a change in zoning ordinance. The location of the application is at 2516 minutes drive, contains approximately 52, 100 square feet, and is a leased space in the Fortex Industrial Complex. The purpose of the request for a conditional use permit is to allow the operation of a metal finishing facility at the location.
Since this is a public hearing, I will now open the public hearing. Is the applicant present? Do you wish to address counsel or just wait and see if there's any questions?
I'll wait to see if there's any questions.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak for this agenda item? Anyone wanting to speak against the agenda item? If not, then I'll close the public hearing and move to the corresponding ordinance. Counsel? Counselmember Williams?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd like to move that we approve ordinance number 0-200-023-15.
Thank you. Counselmember Markham?
Second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Please register your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, sir. Agenda item number 11 is also a public hearing.
Thank you again, Mayor. This is also a public hearing for, on a request for a conditional use permit. This particular property location is a 2333 minutes drive and is approximately 6,000 square feet of leased space in an existing building at that location. The conditional use permit, if approved, would allow for the sale of motorcycles and also allow for motorcycle service at the location.
I now open this public hearing for agenda item number 11. Is the applicant in the audience? Do you wish to address the counsel or just wait for questions? Thank you, sir. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak for this agenda item? Anyone wishing to speak against the agenda item? If not, then I'll close the public hearing and move to the corresponding ordinance. Counselmember Markham?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that we pass ordinance number 0-2000-024-15.
Thank you. Counselmember Jennings?
Yes, for a second.
I have a motion and a second. Please register your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Agenda item number 13, also a public hearing.
Unlike the other two cases, Mayor, this is an amendment to the general zoning ordinance itself. The council will recall that a few meetings ago, you made an amendment or approved an amendment to the boards and commissions ordinance of the city. That amendment removed certain provisions from the old ordinance. The provision removed was one that required that a council member must make an appointment to a board or commission within 45 days, or if that council member failed to do so, then any other member of the council could make an appointment in that particular place. You have made that change, and all of the boards and commissions deleted that provision, with the exception of the zoning board of adjustment. The appointment procedures for the zoning board of adjustment are established in the zoning ordinance itself, which cannot be changed without an amendment being approved by the city council after a public hearing and after you've received a recommendation from the planning and zoning commission. You have received a recommendation from the planning and zoning commission recommending approval of a change.
Thank you. I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak for this agenda item? Anyone wanting to speak against? If not, I'll close the public hearing and move to the corresponding ordinance. Counselmember Hurley?
I move that we approve ordinance 02000-025-15.
Thank you. Counselmember Abert?
I second.
I have a motion and a second. Please register your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Agenda item number 15, also a public hearing.
This public hearing relates to a change or an amendment to the Parks and Open Space Master Plan. As the council is aware, earlier this year, the voters of the city approved a change in the Economic Development Corporation's sales tax to increase that sales tax rate to one-half of 1 percent. Several projects were proposed to the public to be accomplished with the increase in funding if the sales tax were approved, as it was. One of those projects included was an expansion of the city's recreation center. We have also, as part of that process, prepared an application, which you'll be considering in just a moment, for grant funding from the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department in the amount of $750,000 to supplement local funding on the expansion of that facility. One of the requirements of that grant program is that the grant application be in accordance with the locally adopted Parks and Open Space Master Plan. What we're being asked to consider this evening is an amendment to the plan, which specifically provides for expansion of the recreation center. Making this change at this point in time, we think, will be very beneficial to us in the evaluation of the application. And while it certainly doesn't guarantee approval, we think it greatly enhances our chances of having that grant application approved. Mr. Brian Klein with the Hoover Klein Group is here this evening, if you have any questions of him on this issue. And I see also Mr. Millius, the chairman of the Parks Board, is here, and he may have some comments as well.
I will now open this public hearing, and as I ask if there's anyone in the audience that wishes to speak for this agenda item, I just happen to have a speaker's card from Steve Millius. So will you come forward, Steve, and state your name and address for the record?
Steve Millius, 2924 Halton Road. And actually, I put 15 and 16 on there, but really, I'm addressing 16 and not 15. But if there's any questions on 15, it's mainly just an updating of the Park Master Plan and bringing it up to date. So, and I just want to say that as chairman of the Parks Board, we definitely support this update to the master plan.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak for this agenda item? Does anyone want to speak against it? If not, then I'll close the public hearing, and counsel, we'd be ready for a motion. Counselmember Jennings?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to approve R-2003410.
Counselmember Hurley?
I second.
I have a motion and a second. Please register your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Agenda item number 16, Mr. Eisen?
This, again, is related to the item that, the action that you just took. This particular item is for a submission of an application to Texas Parks and Wildlife Department in the amount of $750,000 for expansion of the recreation center. You have, in the past, seen a brief presentation of some of the proposed changes. I've asked Mr. Klein if he would take a few minutes this evening and talk to you about those changes in a little bit more detail. I would point out to you, though, even though you're looking at specifics this evening, that does not mean we can't make some changes in what's being presented this evening as we get into the actual design phase, assuming, of course, that the grant application is approved. So, Mr. Klein, if you're ready to make a few comments?
I'll open the public hearing and then ask Mr. Klein to go ahead and make his comments.
Thank you, and good evening. We have really two actions before the city council this evening, after the public hearing, after we hear the comments. One is to go ahead and authorize a submission of an application to the state for review of the expansion of the building. And the second one is to go ahead and commit some funds, your share of that, and the dollars necessary to carry out the project. Let me begin probably by saying something that you don't hear very often from consultants, and that is, thank you. We certainly appreciate being involved in this project. Also, their thanks go not just to you for engaging us, but to the staff. This is not, this is one of those projects that doesn't, isn't always easy to pick up and just run with. As the saying goes, if you've got 10 people in a room, you probably have 12 different opinions about what ought to happen. And that didn't happen in this case, and it's largely because of the efforts of Bill Eisen, George Fowler, Sal Torres, and the Parks Board, bringing things forward to us in a fashion that we can go ahead and put them together and program for you. So privately, sometimes, thank them for that effort. That was very commendable. We also wish to thank the Birdville Independent School District because it was a lot of the demographic information provided by Donna Walters, and also then the support letter by Dr. Bob Griggs. They really helped to support the application that we're ready to file later this week after you take your action. But let's start at the beginning. When we look at a facility like this, the first thing we do is to take a look at what's going on in the present facility. So we look at the fact that it was built in 1967, really for a population of about 23,000 people. You are now 36,000 people, soon to be 45,000 people. Clearly, we're about outgrowing it. The next thing is, we take a look at the needs that are out there. What is the facility being used for? What are the requests for its use that need to be turned down? And what are the demographics, basically the clientele that really is served by that facility? In 1990, the most recent census information that we had suggests there was 15 percent minority population. We don't have the new census; it is not yet. But we use the Birdville School District Census population that they have, and that suggests the number has gone from 15 to 37 percent minority population in the community, something you're probably aware of, something that also makes a very strong case for a facility like this. 21 percent of the youth in the school district, in particular the four schools nearest the recreation center, are what we call a special population, a youth-at-risk population, that really can benefit from an expanded facility. So then the next thing we do is we take a look at, and we said, well, we have the apparent needs. What are the, what's the character of the needs? What do we need to do if we're going to expand this facility? What would be the expansion potential? And the uses that we identified with assistance of staff was basketball, volleyball, aerobic tap, ballet dance, that's ballet, not belly dance, excuse me, exercise classes, walking track, arts and crafts, weight training, teen center, recreation club room, small youth play area, and also a youth learning center. So all of those things are really now commonly a part of an indoor recreation center, where, when this facility was built, many of those uses didn't exist, or certainly weren't all in the same building. So what we do next, then, is to take a look at how would we go about accomplishing this? And I have, I think you have copies, fresh copies this evening of a document here, the last sheet of which is a fold-out. I have it for the audience as well, if someone... At present, as you know, the building faces west, faces the parking lot, and that was a very convenient thing to do in those days. It really is part of Broadway Park. So it faces west, and it has a very limited number of facilities, and those facilities are very fairly structured, that can only be used in a very relatively inflexible capacity. So we have a couple of arts and crafts rooms, the large gymnasium primarily for basketball, a couple of other rooms that are really used for exercise or aerobics and things of that nature. We looked at it, and we said, well, what is the opportunity to expand? We really had two places we can go. We can go up, or we can go to the east, because going to the west would be on top of the parking lot, going to the south would be on top of the street. And going up, we were not certain in reviewing the building plans, that the building would actually support going up, that it was really ever intended to be a two-story building. So with all the other ADA accessibility standards, we decided that the best, best, and really the least expensive route would be to go ahead and expand to the east. So as you can see on the drawing, we have come up with a new idea, and that is to go ahead and give the facility a little bit more visibility by expanding to the east and facing Broadway Avenue. Some of the uses that I would point out to you here, then, is we've expanded to include another large multipurpose room. Could be used for a half-court basketball. It's a small gymnasium. It could also be used for volleyball or large meeting, recreation meeting-type uses. Would have a very high ceiling, similar to the gymnasium that you have presently, so it would be a very flexible use. Included in the space, then, is a weight room, dance and exercise classes, youth learning center, and all the other uses that you can see listed across the sheet in here, thereby matching the needs that we identified. Now, as we go through the design, about six or seven or eight months from now, we'll actually reexamine those and find out if those are, in fact, the right sizes for those uses, or do we need to shuffle them around a little bit? Some of them may be well-suited to be next to one another. They're quiet uses. Other uses will be a little noisier, so we may cluster them on one end of the building. Another area in here that we expanded was the area for office and staff training. Presently, the only office that's available is one that is just outside the ping pong and pool table area, a very noisy area. So we need a little bit more seclusion for that. As you can see, in the center of the expanded facility, we have an information center, and that's actually going to replace the present control center that you have as you walk into the facility. You can see both out the west, present entrance, and out the south, the new entrance from this area. So from a security standpoint, or people coming in needing directions, that'll be a very central dispatch point for the building. What we then did was to say, well, how are we going to accomplish this? Because if we know what we're going to do, then the next question is how? And the grant application itself is a matching grant. It is a maximum $750,000, and so that becomes a matter of how to, what is the cost going to be to go ahead and expand the building? We looked at the square footage, the present square footage of the building is a little over 13,000. This addition would be 14,000, so we would be doubling the size of the building. The costs associated with that, and the renovations and the furnishings and the site improvements total out to be $1.8 million and some change. The sources of the funds, then, $750,000 through the Texas Parks and Wildlife Grant is our application. The city of Halton City, matching to that grant, is a dollar-to-dollar match, so that would be $750,000 as well. The private commitment to the site, requests were brought out as far as who would like to help with this project. And we're very pleased to share with you the items that have come forward to this point. They're on the sheet that is this color. There are seven parties that have stepped forward to this point, and that is wonderful. It really is, to see that people have an interest in it and that will be willing to not only say they're interested, but to show their interest in it. So that's totaled to $16,800 so far. Something else is remarkable about this, and I'm stepping aside from the presentation here. Usually, we see that soccer people care about soccer, baseball people care about baseball, and that's about where it ends. It's wonderful to see people have a global interest. A lot of the money in here, and particularly a lot of the people who are going to support this, are actually people who are outdoor recreation enthusiasts. It's wonderful to see them support something that's indoor, realizing that it's going to benefit the community, and everybody has a stake in that. So the total commitment on the part of the city this evening, then, is $750,000 to match the grant and $330,520 in addition to that to carry the bulk of the financing for the So I think at this point, that's a briefing, where we came from, where we're going at this point. And as mentioned earlier, there is nothing on these floor plans that can't be changed. It's a commitment to balance the need, to meet the need, and if some walls need to be moved around, or the space needs to be reconfigured, that's something that you will do with your architect of choice after the application is funded.
If I may add just one thing, Brian, to your comments with regard to donations and contributions from the community, the Park Board has voted to recommend to you, and while it doesn't specifically state it in this information you have, it's kind of implied that the Park Board has recommended that three months' worth of revenue from the voluntary donations on water bills go to help fund this project for a couple of reasons. One, it's a little bit more money to apply, and secondly, it's Brian's feeling, and I think a correct one, that in effect, 3,000 people making a contribution, even though it's a dollar and a half a piece, would show a pretty broad-based support. So that is part of the proposal that you're looking at this evening.
You said something about the plans could be changed, walls moved, or whatever?
Yes.
That would be after we hear from the grant application?
Yes, and let me share with you a little bit about that process. It's a very important question. Oftentimes, we put these things in the mail, and we rather assume that someone's going to call us back in short order, and we'll be ready to start. The grant application itself is filed by the end of this week, and it goes into a six-month review period, where the state will actually come by and take a look at your present facility, see that it is well-used and that it is well-worn. And on that basis, they'll make the decision about which ones actually get funded. After that six-month review process, then, you'll be allowed to go ahead and begin the design with an architect for the new facility. After that, then, the state reviews the plans. After that, you start construction.
I see. Any questions from counsel? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Steve, would you like to come forward at this time?
Can you say my name again?
Please.
Steve Millius, 2924 Halton Road. Still, I haven't moved. Brian, I'd like to thank him, because his group has done an excellent job, and we were all very happy in working with him, that all the needs from all the different organizations, youth organizations in the city, we really blended well, I think, on this project, to make sure that all the end results were going to be, the end, that the, excuse me, the needs were going to be met by this. And I just wanted to go on the record and say that I definitely support this application to the, for the state grant for the matching funds for the recreation center. I believe that this is a great program that the state of Texas has to help communities improve their park and rec facilities, especially here at Halton City, where we know the need is great. I think, you know, anyone who's been over to the rec knows the needs that we have there. And this is a way of getting a lot of improvement, or really, you know, twice your money's worth, because they're matching us dollar-for-dollar up to $750,000. So by doing that, it not only takes the burden off some of the residents of Halton City as, for the money that we're having to put forward, but we're actually getting to do a lot more and get a much bigger building. And about the only other thing I'd like to say is, like Brian had mentioned, is I'd like to thank the council, because y'all have been very supportive over the last year of all our parks projects, and on behalf of the Parks Board, we're very appreciative of all the work that y'all do behind the scenes for us also. And I hope that we can definitely have your support on this agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Bertha Roden. Bertha, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Bertha Roden.
There you go.
And I live at 5645 Coventry Park. And I would like to say our recreation center is great, but it's just too small. If you've ever worked there on Saturday, you would know there's not enough room for the children to play, and we have, like he says, our population has outgrown our rec center. And I'm, well, in agreement with what the gentleman said. I was working there one Saturday. This gentleman came in, he was all dressed in his suit and had his briefcase, and I said, can I help you? He said, I would like to tour your rec center. I said, yes, sir. To the left, we have the ceramic room. And I went all around the room, and I said, and this is our one drinking fountain, this is our two restrooms. And I just went on around, and he said, could I see the rest? I said, sir, you've had a panoramic view of our rec center. And he left. He didn't try to sell me anything. I guess he knew I wouldn't have a place to put it. But then, the gentleman was talking about a weight room. A gentleman called me one Saturday, and he says, ma'am, do you have a weight room at your rec center? And I said, no, we don't. And he said, why? The other cities have. And I just told him, I said, sir, if you would donate all of the equipment, we still wouldn't have a place to put it. He hung up on me, and later called back and apologized, and said, if he could be of any service to us, he would be glad to. So I just wanted to put my two cents in and hope we could find a bag of money somewhere to enlarge our rec center, because our children of today are our leaders of tomorrow, and if they don't have structured play, well, they're on the street. Thank you.
Thank you, Bertha. I hope I don't mess up your name. Janelle Mc Houston? McCreeston? Was I close, kinda? You state your name and address, please, for the record.
My name is Janelle Mc Christian. I live at 3521 Halton Road, and I just, I am in agreement with the other two. I believe that this is a good plan, and it's time for the rec to be renovated. We use it in, I'm secretary of Halton Baseball and Halton City Peewee Football. During our registration, it's almost impossible to get in there. So that's really all I had to say. I'm in agreement with the others.
Thank you very much for coming and telling us that. Thanks. Is there anybody else in the audience that wishes to speak for this agenda item? Anyone wishing to speak against it? Then I'll close the public hearing, and counsel, we'd be ready for a motion. Counselmember Williams?
Seeing this golden girl came up here and gave the presentation, I guess I will make a motion, we approve resolution number R-2000-034-10, and get the ball rolling on this.
Thank you. Counselmember Henshawling?
Yes, for a second, Madam Mayor.
I have a motion and a second, gentlemen. Oh, excuse me. Mr. Markham, do you have a discussion? No? Okay. Please register your vote. Motion passes unanimously. On behalf of the youth of our community, and the Parks Board, and the council, we want to thank everybody in the community that has donated and has donated so much each month with their water bill, and I think we're going to have a really lovely facility for you to look at. Thank you all for coming. The next agenda item is our Visitors and Citizens Forum. A five-minute time limit will be granted. Counsel cannot discuss or debate any issue brought forward at this time, nor can any formal action be taken, as this is not a posted agenda item in accordance with the open meetings law. My first speaker's card is for Ray Eklund. Ray, you say you want to speak on the transfer station. I'm going to allow you to speak, but I just want you to know that this isn't an agenda item, and we've made a decision, but you have your five minutes.
Yes, ma'am, I appreciate that. The First Amendment is really important, and the right to speak is really important in this city. And I came to the point tonight just to remind the citizens and ask the council exactly where the process is. It's been a couple of months since we've heard anything. Maybe the staff could tell the citizens exactly where the registration permit is. There's been a piece in the paper recently that may have brought some concern or some misunderstanding among people, and this would be a good opportunity to tell everybody exactly where we're at with the permit, the registration, of bringing a million pounds a day of garbage into our city. I tried to do some math about it, but it got to be a whole bunch of zeros. When I did a million pounds a day, which is the 500 tons, and I multiplied it by six days a week, and multiplied it by 52 weeks a year, that thing's going to operate, I started to get some really big numbers. By the time I got to 25 years, they're going to bring 8 billion, 100 million pounds of trash... trash into our city. And I know they come up here and tell me that they're going to bring me a million dollars, to bring the Halton City a million dollars over that 25 years, but it doesn't add up very well when you see how much trash it really is. Well, I just really came to the council tonight to see if we could get some information about the registration, about the process as it is now, especially in light of the article that was in the paper last Friday. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Fletcher? Is Jim in the audience? Okay. We now move on to announcements and events. Council, do we have any announcements? Councilmember Williams?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody that helped the beautification board last Saturday. We, the beautification board, has adopted Denton Highway from Broadway to 820. Once a month, we go from Broadway to 820 and pick up all the trash and things that are thrown out along the way. And we had about seven beautification board members down there, and we had some help from our trustees. And we got that cleaned up in a rapid time, and we moved on down to Beltran Avenue and 28th Street and took care of those. And I understand that the curbs in that area are going to be painted soon, so we should see a little facelift in that area. And I appreciate everybody that came out and helped us. The other item of interest I have is, this will require glasses to get the date right, the grand finale of our 50th anniversary, which I said that we have Miss Golden Girl here, and she's the one that's been the main event in all of these. We have a car show coming up. It's helped produce by the 50th Anniversary Committee and North Texas Street Rods Association. This will be August 5th and 6th, North Park, City Park, Halton City, Texas. That's on the northeast corner of Highway 820 and 377. Entry vehicles fee is $10. For all the people that want to come down and just be a part of this and walk around and look at it, it's free. Saturday's registration is 9 to 3, Sunday is 9 to 11. Saturday night, they're having a live band with a dance called Rock and Roll Baby. And I'd like to ask Bertha to say the first dance for me. So we'd like to see y'all out there. That's August the 5th and 6th. It'll be at North Park, and this is going to be the grand finale of the 50th anniversary, celebrating our city's 50 years. And we'd like to see everybody out there, and like to see all the council participate in that. Thank you.
Golden Girl, your reign is about to be over, isn't it?
It sure is. And I'm waiting to dig up, open the capsule.
There you go.
That's 50 years.
50 years from now, you're going to be here to open the capsule. She says she'll be here to do that.
She will.
And, well, she's a young 83, so it wouldn't surprise me at all. Do we have any other announcements or events from council? Then we'll move on to agenda item number 17, requests for funding from the Fire Services Board. I think Mr. Davenport is here to talk to us about a fire safety house. Mr. Davenport is on the Fire Safety Board. Are you chairman?
I'm chairman of the Fire Safety Board for this year. I believe that you got a piece of paper in your packet. And I also gave you an extra piece of paper a while ago, telling you what was in this fire safety house. And we started off that we were just going to get a shell and build one for ourselves. Designed it, put everything in it. We sent out 10 bid applications. Five of them said that they would give us an application and a bid on it. We got one back for $12,300. That's just for a shell. And on this movie that I showed you a while ago, and the price list, we can buy a 28 and a half foot with everything in it for $19,000. And this is a good tool to educate the kids. If we could just save one life, it would be well worth it. You know, we lost a little girl last year in a house fire, because she wasn't educated enough to get out of it. So I know that you can't approve buying one tonight, because we don't have enough bids for one. But I would like for you to think about it and give us an okay, maybe two. Go ahead and get the bids where we can have one, and maybe get it in here by October, where we can start going around to the different schools. And I believe that we can take care of 20 kids at a time in this trailer. They've got bleacher seats in there that we can show them TV, movies about how to do it, what to do. And you've got a list there of everything. It's on this trailer, a partial list of it. And the only thing that I'm asking is kind of an approval to go ahead and try to get some bids, if y'all would approve it. If you don't approve it, you know, it'd be just a waste of time, you know, and try to do anything else to it.
Let me ask the city manager, there's not a problem with them going out for bids, is there? Because we do, we'll be working on budget next month, and if you can get the bids in by then?
The bid process with advertising would probably take about three weeks, assuming the specifications are ready to go right away. So there's even an outside chance by your next council meeting, you would have the results. That's pretty tight, but it's possible at least. The other question then becomes how you're going to pay for it. If I understand Mr. Davenport correctly, they would actually like to have the item on hand prior to the beginning of the fiscal year, on October 1st, so they can begin safety training in the schools. And while I don't typically recommend that you do this, this is a capital one-time item, and we've had a pretty good year in terms of general fund revenue this year, and there would be sufficient surplus revenue to purchase an item of this dollar amount. If you do wish to go ahead, then I think you'd take the funding from that source and make the purchase during the current fiscal year.
Then we just need a motion to okay them going out for bids?
Yes.
Okay, at this point? Well, let's see. I hope I'm getting this right. I think Mr., Councilmember Hurley was first.
I move that the council approve the request to seek proposals for the price of a parking trailer, so that this can be programmed into next year's budget. Have it available.
Would that be next year's or this year?
Did you say this year or next?
That's up to you. But my understanding is that the request was for the current year.
Have it in October.
And I would tell you that I think that you will have funds available in the current year if you desire to do that.
I'll change that motion to.
All right. Councilmember Markham?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think it's a wonderful tool. I look forward to seeing when the city is able to purchase it, hopefully, and I stake a motion.
Thank you. I have discussion, let's see. Councilmember Hanserlin?
I just want to ask Mr. Davenport, how long do you think it's going to take you to get it? If we move on this pretty quickly, are you going to be able to get it before October?
Jerry, and there are six weeks' delivery date on that?
Yeah, mostly.
Six weeks.
Okay, so it's a pretty tight timetable.
Yeah.
I also will say that I've been through, with my family and my daughters, the Fullworth fire trailer. It's an incredible tool, incredible teaching tool, and it's, I think it'd be a real asset for our city to have one. So, thank you, Mr. Davenport.
Thank you.
Well, I have a motion and a second. Please register your vote. Motion passes. Wait a minute. Okay, Councilmember Markham, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Davenport.
Thank you.
Get those requests for bids out. Council, I'm sorry, agenda item number 18 has been tabled until the next council meeting, so we'll move ahead with agenda item number 19 on C3 and C4 zoning. Ms. Eisen?
Two meetings ago, Councilmember Jennings had made some suggestions with regard to changes to the C3 and C4 zoning districts, and asked that those be written up in ordinance form. Now, you have a copy of that draft ordinance in front of you at this time. Now, you had some discussion of it, of course, in pre-council. Part of that discussion involved dropping item number 7 at the very top of page 3, and also adding a provision to the amendments to the C4 zoning district to eliminate the one-acre minimum size requirement. There's also a procedure where, let me back up and say, that one of the conditions here is that certain uses that belong in the C4 district that are not in the C4 district today, in particular automobile paint and body shops, and automobile sales facilities, would have six months from the date that this ordinance is finally passed until, during which they can submit an application for rezoning to the C4 zoning category. Any of the entities that did not submit a zoning request during that time period would then lose their non-conforming status at that particular point in time. At that, I'll stop and see if there are any questions that we could answer specifically, or certainly provide opportunity for council discussion and comment.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes, Madam Mayor. As you remember earlier in the year, we'd discussed this, and since I have property that could be affected by this, I have decided to recuse myself, and the city secretary has that statement on hand, and I'll exercise that right to recuse myself at this time.
All right. Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At this time, I would like to make a motion that we accept the draft as written, with the removal of the lot size restrictions in C4 as discussed in pre-council, with the removal of item number 7 and section 2 regarding licensing, and make an addition that would offer some type of grandfather status for the 60 to 80 existing facilities that we discussed in pre-council, that to those people that file to upgrade within the six-month period, some type of grandfather status that would allow them to go ahead and become C4 entities and legal conforming at that time. Then I would further move that we send that proposal to planning and zoning, with their ratification and/or change.
Councilmember Jennings, if I may, there was one other thing that was discussed in pre-council, and I don't know if this was something that you wanted to remember or not, about limiting time on ZBA variances. I didn't know if you wanted to put that in there or not. We had talked about that.
As far as the six-month timeframe?
Right.
Yes, but anyone who had applied within that six-month timeframe, if their case wasn't heard, then they would still be able to have their case heard without any type of penalty.
And did you mention to repeal the one-acre minimum?
Yes, I did.
Okay, okay. Councilmember Hurley?
Ma'am, I'd like to say that.
I have a motion and a second. Let's see. Councilmember Patino?
Oh, there was a second.
All right. Councilmember Hanserlin?
I had just a couple of quick questions, and this is really probably directed towards our city attorney. We've, in pre-council, we're talking about eliminating the one-lot minimum, one-acre minimum for lots from this. That's applicable to any new businesses that, I mean, that would be eventually a permanent part of the C4 zoning, which would be applicable to any new businesses that would come in. Is that?
That's my understanding. We would just delete the minimum lot size requirement in the C4 district.
Okay. I guess I have a question for, really directed towards city manager, and this is really from the perspective of city staff. We took one particular part of the zoning ordinance out, the one-acre lot minimum size, which was something that was talked about in the workshops that we had previously. But we also had some other dialogue in pre-council about how staff is to maybe consider how they would process these zoning applications. And I guess I would ask city manager Bill Eisen if there are any large concerns that come to the top that we probably need to maybe discuss tonight before we, you know, finally butt this in.
I think the only concerns, unaddressed at this point, are the same ones that were discussed in pre-council, and that is, in general, how do you want us to, at the staff level, deal with these cases? Do you want us to treat them like any other case? Do you want to take into account that these are existing uses that have been here for a while already, and be a bit more flexible in terms of looking at them? And, or if we handle it just like another case with the ZBA, then we'll be hearing a number of cases, perhaps, on some of these tracks that may not meet setback requirements, as an example, just because the buildings are already in place, and it's obviously not practical to have somebody move their building just to conform to C4 zoning. And whether or not those questions are answered tonight, or they're answered in discussion and deliberations at the P and Z level, and what comes back to you, or they're answered at the time they come back to you, I think it would be very helpful for us at the staff level to have some direction with regard to those kinds of issues. Doesn't necessarily have to be dealt with this evening, but certainly before final adoption. I think we do need to have some guidelines from the council as far as how you'd want us to deal with these kinds of issues.
And those kinds of issues are things such as the landscaping issue, site plans, drainage studies, those particular things?
Yes.
Those are what we're talking about? Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, please register your vote. Motion passes with Councilmember Williams abstaining, and Councilmember Hanserlin voting no. The next agenda item is an agreement, approval of an agreement with Commonwealth Housing Corporation. Ms. Eisen?
Late last year, you received, or late last year, you received word from a company called Commonwealth Housing Corporation that they had acquired a multifamily zone tract of land off of McLean Road, and that you also learned at that time that Commonwealth is a community housing development organization under federal law and is exempt from local property taxes. After some discussions with Commonwealth, they have agreed to pay, make payments in lieu of taxes in amounts each year that would be equal to the taxes that they would have paid if they had been subject to local property taxes. The agreement you're considering this evening formalizes that arrangement with them, not only requiring that Commonwealth make those annual payments based upon assessed value as determined by the Central Appraisal District, but it also provides that anyone, any other organization that has that same community housing development organization, federal status, that might acquire the property would have to comply with the same agreement as a condition of purchasing the property. We believe that we've tied down all of the potential problems with the agreement, and would recommend approval at this time.
Thank you. Council? Councilmember Williams?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the agreement with Commonwealth Housing Corporation for payment in lieu of taxes.
Councilmember Markham?
Second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Please register your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Agenda item number 21 is for approval of additional court dockets for municipal court. I don't know that we need to have any particular comment on that from the city manager. We pretty much discussed it in pre-council. Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In reference to the discussion we had about this earlier in pre-council, I would like to move that we grant 10 extra dockets to the municipal court at this time.
Thank you. Councilmember Markham?
I'll stake a motion.
I have a motion and a second. Please register your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Boards and commissions are our next agenda item. Do we have any appointments tonight? Councilmember Markham?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have one appointment to the Crime Eventant Board in place 7. I'd like to submit the name of Jan Gamble, 1909, Oakwood, for ratification. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilmember Avery?
Yes, mine is a reappointment. Frank Shelton to the Fire Services Board.
Is that?
That's all that I have. I'm sorry.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Dewey Markham for the vacancy on the Economic Development
Any others, council? Then I will need to... Then I will need to, let's ratify those gentlemen and ladies. And they are ratified. Motion passes unanimously. I do want to remind council that have not made their appointments for the Ethics Committee or have, still have appointments for the Crime Control District Committee, that they will be having a meeting very shortly and the people that you decide to appoint would like to have a little time to prepare for that meeting. We're all here so we don't have excused absences. So at this time, council will recess pursuant to the Texas Government Code, Open Meetings Act, sections number 551.071 and 551.073 at 8:27.